...a groundwater management plan. I mean, you could take a look at Kitsap County's groundwater management plan, Bashan Island's groundwater management plan. They include a lot of public input over many, many years. And in the case of Bashan Island, they still have committees meeting 20 years later. So far, the only public outreach happened during the COVID days with a one-hour Zoom call about four years ago, of which at least half an hour of that was taken up by a PowerPoint presentation. So it included maybe half an hour of public input. I know you guys were talking about one in October now, but it's really happening way too late in the process. And I did hear from the consultant in response to comments that at this point, they're out of money as far as being able to run additional scenarios, which means that in addition to not being able to truly respond to comments from the technical advisory committee and the committee, they won't be able to respond to any significant comments asking for additional work that might come from the public. So by putting the public comments so late in the process, it's at the point where they're out of money and they say they can't do it anyway, with a promise to do it in three to four years. But we know that there's no money that's been earmarked for that at this point. So it's just a promise. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mary Claire Kirsten.
Good evening. My name is Mary Claire Kirsten, 145 Ferncliffe Avenue. I'm hopeful that the turnout tonight impresses upon you how much your constituents dislike some of these recent decisions regarding upzoning our island. I only wish that the citizens from 2075 could be here as they will be more severely impacted when the aquifers show significant and scary drawdowns as a result of some decisions that are being made today. The council, as well as, you know, many, many groups across the island, we begin our meetings with acknowledging and honoring the Suamish tribe because Bainbridge Islanders seek to steward their lands as the tribe would wish. This is a core Bainbridge value. The decisions that are being made today to monitor the drawdown of the aquifer are the antithesis of this value. I was here the night the council celebrated Bainbridge Reed's Choice of Braiding Sweetgrass by Robin Kimmmerer. Her ethic, which she repeated over and over in the book, was that we should all ensure that the same amount of resource will be available next year for all of nature to enjoy. And I know many people here on Bainbridge took that to heart and were facing some very heavy realities with the drawdown, the unsustainable drawdown of our aquifers today. My biggest beef with COBI, the planning department, and the council is what I interpret as deceit of the public. We are constantly being informed that we have a mandate to increase our population. The truth is that we do not have a mandate to increase our population. The EPA's designation of our city as a sole source aquifer exempts us from the unfunded mandate, and I believe you know that. Before we increase our population by one more human, please, I ask you, we all ask you, show us the water conservation plan you need to be proposing now. The unsustainable drawdown of the aquifer is now. And that is our most important and most essential resource. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Susan Hughes, then John Burns, then Bill Eckle. And one little reminder, in case we forgot, there's no clapping. Otherwise, we can just do it without comment. Okay.
Good evening, council members. I want to say I totally agree with everything that Mary Claire said, but I didn't come here to talk about aquifers. I came here to talk about the corner at 650 Winslow Way. I'm very much against the construction of a residential four-story building there, whether it's affordable housing or not. I applaud the council's efforts to address affordable housing because it's needed everywhere across this country. But this corner is not the place to put any kind of residential building. There's a number of reasons for this, in my opinion. I think it's a very bad idea. In fact, I think it's a crazy idea. First of all, it's the busiest intersection in the island. It's the main entry and exit point for all of the visitors and residents who come into Winslow. And for someone myself who lives on the north end of the island, driving into Winslow has already become a challenge because Winslow is in kind of a dead-end location. There's only three major roads or roads that actually come into Winslow, 305 being the major artery. And already, it's a very difficult road to get into Winslow with. If we upzone with the comprehensive plan, with adding 10, 5,000 more people to Winslow, can you imagine the traffic at that intersection? The other thing about this project is it's going to add more cars to that intersection. I think the plan is 75 to 100 new cars to that corner. So that will just impact that intersection, the traffic at that intersection substantially more. Also, as a parent with children, that corner would be the last place I would want to live with children with that busy intersection there, just steps away. I would be scared to death to let them out the door, to leave them alone. Also, the schools are a long distance from that area. So how are those kids going to get to school? Are they going to walk up the 305? Or are they going to walk up Madison? How are they supposed to get there if they're not bussed? And then buses, of course, will add more congestion to that corner. Also, this building is in a perfect location to service people in Seattle. People living on Bainbridge Island, right at their ferry terminal, can jump on the ferry, go to Seattle, work, and come Building a blocky four-story building on less than an acre of land violates the guiding principles of this city. Our guiding principle seeks to preserve the small-town historic character of downtown Winslow, and this building will not do it. Last, the proposed construction will block the sunlight and Eagle Harbor view shed from Winslow Way and be the first thing that visitors see when entering the island. In a community that prizes its art and its culture, is this the first impression that you want to see? So I ask you to find a different location. I know that the city owns other properties on this island. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, Susan, and then John. John Burns, and then Bill Eckle and Dave Henry after that.
Good evening. My name is John Burns, and I'm a resident of Bainbridge Island. I've lived here for 25 years. I'm a local Seattle boy. I was born and raised in Seattle, and I've enjoyed, really enjoyed, living on Bainbridge Island these last years. My concern is our aquifer and water. I love the Sunday paper, and every Sunday, I take a look at the rain gauge, and I find that, at least as of probably last Sunday, anyway, we're about six inches behind in rainfall this year. Okay? Every year, as we know, the environment, hotter and hotter. Okay? I think a couple of bad years on Bainbridge Island, we could run out of water. It's not impossible to consider, okay, or to happen. Just a little side note, I'm half-Italian. A number of years ago, I visited the Isle of Capri with my mother. Out in the bay of Capri, this beautiful Italian island, is a big water tanker. Every day, it comes over from the mainland, docks there, and pumps the water to the island. They don't have enough water for all the people that are there. They're loving the island to death. Too many people, not enough water. Let's not do that here on Bainbridge Island. We have a limited amount of water here. Rain charged aquifers are our only source in our wells. So what are we going to do if we run short? If we overgrow, what then? Why risk it? If we don't have a mandate to grow big, big, then let's grow small, take our time with it, grow as we understand our water and what we have here to share. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Bill Eckle. I'm here to just think about two points. The first is, what does sustainable groundwater management mean? To me, it's not diminishing the quality or the quantity of water in our aquifers, but it has a time dimension, too. And that goes far beyond your folks' tenure on the council. We refer to our Native American friends and neighbors, and I'd like to refer to them again. They made important decisions for the seventh generation. So we're talking about sustainable groundwater for hundreds of years. Keep that in mind. It's a long time. The second thing I want to touch on briefly is the affordable housing being proposed at Winslow Way and the highway. I've seen concerns expressed, I guess mostly in social media, about people from Seattle coming here to live in the affordable housing and it not solving the problem, anyway. If that is indeed a real concern, it's going to be a problem in other places than at that police station location. If the affordable housing is built three blocks farther away, or five blocks farther away, or 10 blocks farther away, people coming from Seattle, if they qualify, are still going to be able to take residence there. I understand that the low-income housing institute says they cannot prevent that from happening. I now proclaim, I am not an attorney. But the last time I looked at the civil rights laws, the zip code of where you live or the zip code of where you work is not a protected class. If LIHI cannot screen people who work on the island already or who are underhoused on the island already, then perhaps it's time to sever the relationship with them and partner with somebody who can make that screening. If otherwise, people are qualified for the affordable or low-income housing. If they work here, if they're underhoused here, they should be able to live here. Thank you very much for your time, for your service.
Thank you. Next, Dave Henry, then David Gray, and then Michael Schwenk.
I've spent a lot of time in this community, and I remember the earlier people who are on our city councils and a couple of you that are here now. We are repeating history that I lived with our government for decades. And there were two things that I'm bringing up at this moment. I'm going to put them up on a projector, but that's not possible anymore. But Clarence is important because we got hit... This is a picture of a Trojan horse arriving on the bow of the ferry to Bainbridge Island. And that is very significant because we sold out the future of this community to a big, major dot com because they had wine and pizza parties, and they had good access to our important people on Bainbridge Island. And that story has been up on, well documented. And I've got 10 radio talk show interviews with me about the ISP channel out of Palo Alto and what they wanted out of Bainbridge. They wanted to sell us broadband access. The reason I'm using this is because Clarence knows about let it not happen again. And I did a website for it, and it was part of Bainbridge Community Network, which no longer functions. It's out there. Bainbridgeisland.org will get you to scraps. But what I'm seeing is this history is being relived with our water right now and our housing. I'm poor, but I'm in senior housing, and it's under attack. So what I'm saying is, we need to... Kitsap County told us, when we became a city and incorporated, I was part of that. John Horstley, our county commissioner, asked me to be on the Water Shoreline Master Plan when it was going to come to Bainbridge. And we lost so much. And so what I'm asking is, Kitsap County said, don't come to us when you incorporate and want water when you run out of water. And I'm asking you not to run out of water. Manage our water. Manage our housing. Manage being seniors still without being done away with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is David Gray. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Hello. My name is David Gray. I'm a longtime resident of the island, live less than a mile away. I'm raising three school-aged children here on the island, and I plan to live my life here. This is my first time to enter this building, and I felt obligated to do so for the issue of the 625 Winslow Way project. My background's in civil engineering with a focus on complex construction planning, estimating. The project's not dissimilar to the one that we're proposing here. And I recognize the strong need for affordable housing on the island. But when you look and assess a project, you have to consider the location first, and then your partners in the project second. It seems first off that the location is severely flawed. It's alarming in so many ways. It's too small, traffic congestion issues, parking below grade. That close proximity to the waterfront is extraordinarily difficult, expensive, risky. It adds cost to construction. It's too expensive to do a project just like this for a feather in the hat. It doesn't make sense financially. You could do a lot more somewhere else. There's more viable alternatives that exist, you know? Long-term affordability for people that were placed at that location is irrational. Second, dealing with partners, I've done some research into Lehe, and I've heard about them through my connections in construction. Their track record is seriously concerning. They've cost overruns on every project they've engaged in, failure to deliver, potential for insolvency down the road is an extreme concern. We can do better. I know that there's options out there that exist. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Next is... Next is Michael Schwenk.
Good evening, council. Mr. Quinslin, eye contact. Just want to make sure. First of all, Mary Claire, thank you very much for that first speech. I attended the planning commission meeting last Thursday. It's been a long time, and I took the summer off. For a lot of residents, these meetings can be as frustrating as they are to others. And so I was looking for, okay, what's been going on? It's been a year, almost a year and a half. They've been re-massaging the three alternatives that the paid consultants came up with. They started some time ago, at the beginning of the summer or before, to come up with a blended alternative instead of just picking one. And of course, I'm all for as-is, number one. I think that's adequate for what we need to do. But I was really shocked because they're talking about the ferry terminal area was, how are we going to characterize that? How are we going to build it up? How are we going to change the zoning and whatever? And I'm listening to the commission members, and I know we have architects, leaders of the industry, urban planners, attorneys, or attorneys, maybe not in practice, but attorneys. So these are all very smart people. But they're talking about zoning like it's their little game of SimCity and how they're going to plan stuff for everybody. They talk about hotels, that there's room for hotels there, the views, how you could upzone it, whether it should be four stories or five stories. I mean, it just goes on and on, and it's kind of like, who are these folks? What direction are they getting from the council to talk about things? And then they even came up with where somebody said, we got to stop using the word tourist because we really want this gateway of the ferry area to be the gateway to the cascade, the Olympic Mountains, to Palsbo, to our businesses, and for all the tourists. And somebody said, well, we should got to stop using the word tourist. We just got to talk about visitors. And another commissioner mentioned the fact that maybe it's not a good idea to keep referencing hotels. It's not very palatable to a lot of people. Well, no, it isn't because it comes back to water. Water, we have water. I can see it. 30 seconds. Water, concerns, resource concerns, and we're still talking about flooding the zone. So what we're really doing is we're extending the waterfront of Seattle into our city center and bifurcating our island to where I can hardly get to the grocery store, the bank, the doctor, or anything during the summer months. It's time to really draw back, guys, and stop growing.
Thanks, Michael. Next is Kevin Federley.
I'm Kevin Federley from the north end of the island. I was going to talk about the 625 corner deal because I'm concerned about the longevity of the affordable housing that gets created. LIHI, as the vendor, is very troubling. They're in financial trouble today. They're losing money today. They are selling their projects to make up cash today. And I don't know how they're going to pull together the construction creation of a bunch of units here when they're bleeding in Seattle. And these projects that they're selling, they're selling to market rate investors, private entities. They're going to be happy to charge full-bore rent. So I'm concerned that as LIHI is a vendor, they may not make it long enough for this project to, you know, live for perpetuity. Then, you know, I heard in the last few weeks that there's a 15-year time span to your deal with LIHI. After that, they can sell the building. So you're going to take the most important, valuable piece of property in Bainbridge and allow private entities to own it? We've got to revisit this deal. And I'm also concerned about, you know, there's alternatives have been popping up. There's these backroom deals being proposed for affordable housing here. You know, it's the same guys playing Monopoly with Bainbridge Land who are jockeying for position with your goal to create housing. So what we want, you know, is housing for perpetuity. We need to own the city. We need to own these units. We need to own them forever so that they can stay affordable forever. Palsbo can do it. Why can't we? So I want to propose an alternative. I was here a few months ago, and I talked about it. It's 10 years ago now that the city was working on an affordable housing community at the Suzuki property next to Woodward School. That's the 13-acre site. There's tons of space to build a village. And I propose that we revisit that project. Let's go dust off the documents that are out there and get going again on something that's more, I don't know, doable and would be here for years in the future. Let's get a committee to scope it out and create an RFQ so that we can go get, figure out what the costs would be, and then put it before the voters. It's not going to be cheap. We need to do something, and we need to do it forever. So let's get the money in front of the voters and have them say yea or nay. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Aquia Karen Vargas.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, community. I just want to commend you all for all the proclamations that I heard tonight. Many of them were about public health and safety. And I hope that the community heard them as well. I know that I've heard a lot of concern tonight about preparedness, about the impact and the stewarding of the lands as well as natural resources. And I think that these essential resources, whether they are water or affordable housing or guiding principles that our city leaders, as well as our community here, wants to abide by. But when we talk about essential resources, when we talk about foundational principles and guidelines to help us to move forward in a healthy way, in a safety way, in a way that it looks at health and wellness as a community, when we talk about water, water is life. We have to have water to live. That's a concern because we have to understand what's happening with those natural resources. And if we deplete them, where will we all be? We'll all be suffering. We have to have a plan that looks at what sustains us, the natural resources here on this island, and what is going to keep us in health and well-being. So when we talk about what the plans are or what the community needs are, or us coming together as a community to be able to have these conversations, it's not me against you and you against us. This is all about all of us. This is about our children. This is about our families. This is about future generations. And when we talk about how do we sustain humanity, the decisions that we make here today, and you all, I'm looking at all of your faces, will determine what our future is going to look like for our children. So as we go forward and move forward, you know, I came here because of the 9/11. I didn't even think I would hear half of the things I've heard tonight, which are alarming. They're alarming for me, and they're alarming for our future. And I commend this leadership, and I commend the city council, and I commend the community because we have to be able to dialogue and talk with one another about where we'll go.
Thank you. Next is Carol Clement.
Thank you. So I came here to talk about the 625 building and to let you know that my husband and I are very much opposed to it. Just everything I've read and seen the site and walking by it on almost a daily basis when I walk to town, it's just too expensive a site to attempt to build low-cost housing. The parking, shoring up the site, it's just you're shoehorning in something into a site that really doesn't belong there. We need, we clearly need low-income housing. We need, we clearly need low income housing, but not there. And everything I've read about the partner that you're considering going with is alarming. And so I don't understand why we would select LIHI as a partner to move forward with when Seattle is having so many problems with them. And why would we would think we would be any better off than Seattle is? Who's had a lot of experience in building low income housing? But, and I also have a letter from my neighbors, Sherry and Jeff Scogum, who also aren't able to be here this night, tonight, but also want to voice their opposition to the project. So I don't know if I can submit it to the record. But I, I was kind of startled, you know, listening to the, the proclamations and Puget Sound starts here and how important, you know, all, all of these accolades of, of the tributes to the land and, and how important all of this is. And I live near Eagle Harbor and I can't tell you the number of times that we've closed Eagle Harbor because of sewage spills, because of, I mean, and hundreds of thousands of gallons of sewage spilling into Eagle Harbor or partially treated effluent. I mean, how can we talk about these tributes when, and talk about upzoning when we haven't dealt with basic services that the community needs to be providing that you're, we're not? I mean, it's unacceptable to have sewage spilling into the harbor. And how can we talk about Puget Sound starts here and all these wonderful things we want to do? When we are polluting Puget Sound? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wade Green, then Janet Lurs, then Lisa Neal.
My name's Wade Green. I'm, was born in Seattle, but I'm a relatively newcomer to Bainbridge. I've been here 18 years. And the reason I came to, to Bainbridge was because of the character of the area. And if I wanted to live in a place with six story buildings, I would have moved to Bellevue or somewhere like that. I'm totally against upzoning and, and the plans you have for the corner. It's, it's a bad use of that space. I can see us putting in a welcome center for the Olympic Peninsula or move the Chamber of Commerce there or something for the city, but it's our front yard. That's the first thing people see when they come to the island. And everyone here is, that's already spoken. I agree with virtually everything that they've said. There's a better use for that space. The, there's better places for housing. Because that's not a good location for, for people to live. And the traffic, the impact on the neighbors, and I'm going to be one of those neighbors. The impact is going to be rather severe for us. We can hardly get out of our parking areas now. Every person I've talked to in my neighborhood has been against this project 100%. I have not been able to find one person who thought this was a good idea. So I, I just wanted to make it clear that we, at least myself and my neighbors, we don't think this is a good idea. We don't think it should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, oh, I lost my spot. Um, that was Wade Janet. Did Janet Lurs and then Lisa Neal. Janet Lurs? Oh, okay, she's coming.
I first brought the Seattle Times article that talks about the housing group that you chose to do the construction with. And I'm going to just leave it here for all of you to read. I guess I leave here. Next, I'm going to just read something that I sent to all of you last night. And I'll just read it out loud and I'll read it till the, the time stops because it's longer than three minutes I practiced at home. So we'll, sorry, pause at the gateway. Let's get this right for Bainbridge. I love that the first breath when ferry doors open and Bainbridge comes into view, the gulls lifting off the pilings, the soft shoulder of Eagle Harbor, the hum of bikes and laughter as people step onto Winslow Way. That moment is our island's handshake. It says who we are before we utter a word, which is why the plan now moving forward for the old police station corner, the very threshold of our town, deserves a pause, a reset and a true community conversation about design excellence. No eyesores, not at our front door. Before anyone brushes this off as NIMBY hand wringing, I want affordable housing on Bainbridge Island. We need it. Our teachers, healthcare workers, hospitality and retail staff, artists, nonprofit leaders, so many people who give this place its warmth are priced out. The question is not whether to build, but how and where to build so that we can expand affordability and protect the irreplaceable character of this place we call home. Those goals are not in conflict. In fact, if we treat them as opposites, we guarantee a worse outcome for both. A front door is not just another wall. Cities tell their stories at their edges. A gateway is a promise. This is who lives here. This is what we care about. This is the future we're building. Our gateway sits at the meeting point of foot passengers, cyclists, drivers and school kids between BEMIS cultural beacon and the water within walking distance of town and country and so on. We'll feel this every single day. The current scheme leans too hard on good enough, mass and minimum compliance instead of rising to the occasion. It asks a civic gateway to carry the full weight of a complicated affordability challenge by itself. How dare we? That is too much program for too small a space with too little imagination for the public realm. The result is a block that feels very bulky where it should be porous, inward looking where it should open to light and movement and utilitarian where it should be generous. It's not that any single drawing is unforgivable. It's that the accumulated compromises add up to a lost opportunity at the exact spot that where we can afford to lose. Yes to housing, yes to standards that honor this place. We can have both more affordable homes and a front door that makes us proud. But we get there by starting with the street and the sky, by drawing the pedestrian experience first, by protecting view corridors, daylight and a strong sense of arrival. We do it by setting a clear gateway brief and scoring proposals on how well they serve the public realm. That's us. Not just how a unit's going to be squeezed into a footprint. What might a worthy brief look like? A scenic plaza that invites people to pause, meet and celebrate.
Janet, we're all set, yeah.
Sorry about that. You get the idea. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Lisa Neal.
Lisa Neal, Bainbridge Island. I don't have anything really exciting to say. These statements have all been very eloquent, but I want to talk about money. I'm going to call it 625 Winslow Way. I don't know if it's going to be moved or whatever, but I'll call it that. I've been thinking about this even before the article came out in the paper. And I've been wondering to myself, knowing as we all do, what the inflation rate has been, knowing as we all do that wages have not kept pace for 40 years. I, I sent you an email before, but when I came out of high school, wages were X and now they're 2X, but housing is 4X. So, so my, my point is, what we don't want to do is use a one stop shop, build the affordable housing and then get told in five years, you know what, we're out of money, we need more money. And it's sort of an open ended thing. And so I'm wondering if the council could consider taking one of the study session days that gets, sometimes gets skipped because there's no business to, to do. And maybe sit down and ask Lehigh to come in and say, what, what does a building this size cost to run now? What are your rents? And, and ask someone to project it. I mean, somebody on staff could probably project out. And just really analyze this because it seems to me that if we, if we know this now, we can start funding funds now. We can use excise taxes, which we don't do for affordable housing. We can do something with our lodging tax instead of giving it back to the tourist business. And there are probably other places that we can go look and staff probably knows this better than I do. And so that's one, one point I would like to make is maybe take a, take one day and take a hard look at this and really analyze it and say, what do we need in a fund? If the, what I see is inevitable happens. Because we don't want to build something lovely for people and then turn around and say, you know what, we're sorry, we're going to have to close it down. We don't have any money. That's not what we're going for, obviously. And then the other question I have for you to maybe think about is, do we have to use a one stop shop? Can we get someone to build this? And then can we go to someone like HRB that every, I've not heard anything about HRB? That's negative. And ask them, can they manage the property? And what do they think about it anyway? So I'm just sort of spitballing here because I don't see a good end to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Andre Lorenz, then Dawn Jannow, then Angela Sandic.
How we doing? Um, I had two minutes and 59 seconds to speak, but I think that before I sound like Charlie Brown's teacher, don't want to have your eyes glossing over. I think that it's important that the council members recognize that you're entrusted with more than just approving projects. You're the stewards of Bainbridge Island. Transparency, accountability and long-term advocacy are your responsibility. We can't take away our water, our safety, our environmental short, our environment for short-term growth and priorities. The question is simple. Will you stand behind the community and protect our future? Or we allow an out of scale project to change us forever? Thank you.
Thank you. Some of us learned in school, so then, next Dawn Jannow.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. Thank you so much. My name's Dawn Jannow. I live on the south end of the island. And I just am really appreciating this community engagement here tonight. I'm here to talk a little bit about process, about the process of how we got to where we are. We are, comprehensive plan is not complete. The groundwater management plan is not complete. And it feels really unsound to me right now to be moving forward with projects and what's called spot zoning, asking the planning commission to upzone in order to meet the needs of this specific project. I see on your consent agenda this evening, 5D, that we are going to increase, potentially increase Joe Tovar, who is our consultant, from $33,600 to $69,600, an increase of $33,600 because the comprehensive plan is still not complete. I really believe in my heart of hearts that it is very imperative that you guys finish the comprehensive plan with everything in place before we do any further zoning or any planning. This entire thing seems entirely backwards. We need an island wide comprehensive plan and we need an island wide housing plan where we understand what this island needs. We know we need low income housing. We know we need mid, housing for people in the middle incomes. There are multiple options on the table right now and I encourage you all to take your time, pause this right now, understand where we're going so that the plan guides the process, not the projects guiding the plan. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dawn. Next is Angela Sandic? Or is it Sandrick? Sorry.
I'm going to have to hold this. Hi, my name is Angela Sandri. My husband Piero and I and our four children moved to the island 47 years ago. Two of our adult kids decided they wanted to move back to the island. But soon they learned that it was very difficult to find houses that they could afford. And only one of them was barely able to accomplish that. So we have some understanding of the need for affordable housing on the island. But as we consider that we must do this, solve this problem that we've all been talking about, we believe we have the following obligations. We must maintain the natural beauty and serenity of this small island. And that includes charm, ease and uniqueness of our small town shopping area. We must not build more than the subarea culture can sustain. Our comprehensive plan should not be altered just to accommodate outside interests or those of, of the city council. We must provide appropriate housing for those in various income levels today, now, not for an uncertain growth estimation. The truth is that contrary to the insulting words of the director of Bainbridge Island Resources, who in an op ed suggested that anyone who disagreed with this ugly proposal is being selfish and uncaring. And we are all for affordable housing all over the island, not what that article said. But we don't want it in one gigantic monstrosity, five or six stories tall at the entrance to our charming, charming town. We have a three to four story limit on housing for a reason. Huge apartment buildings might be appropriate in large cities, but it is out of character for the small town of Winslow. Finally, let's be clear. It does not have to be ugly to be affordable.
Thank you. Derek Beals. Then Ron Peltier and then Sharon Corder.
A little out of order. I thought I had more time. So there's been a lot of arguments in here that, that I really appreciate. And this is my first time in the building. But I felt compelled to come here tonight because I've seen so many threats to the character of Winslow. And I want to advocate for a tourism corridor from the ferry up to Winslow Green. There needs to be a formal recognition by this council of the importance of tourism to our small businesses and our economy. Every development proposal along this corridor should be considered through this lens. Because if we deteriorate the Bainbridge guest experience that all of our businesses rely on, then nothing downstream matters. And we won't need employees or employee housing. For this reason, I oppose both the 625 project in the strongest of terms, as well as the upzoning. I'm not speaking up against affordable housing broadly, although I do have my concerns about the scale of the project. But instead specifically speaking out against low income housing at that location. The prominent important corner should be reserved to enhance the guest experience and boost our businesses so we get the luxury of having employees to find housing for. This project is a one-way door that we shouldn't walk through. I also want to quickly mention sort of a frustration that I continue to have about the mischaracterization that this is affordable housing for teachers, police, firemen, when in fact it's, it's not. Most of them would not qualify for this. I'm not saying this council is mischaracterizing it, but there's a lot of confusion among supporters. And I think that should be made very clear who this is for. So everyone's clear.
Thank you so much, Derek. And Ron Peltier.
Good evening, council members. Well, this is one of those council meetings. I hope you're all taking notes on all the comments you're getting. Anyhow, and I also hope that you have looked at the draft groundwater management plan. The science in the plan is, it's, I know it's reasonable. It actually shows, projects some, with the modeling, some drawdowns of important aquifers like the Fletcher Bay Aquifer, which has already been drawn down. That was, that was, that was one of the findings in the USGS study in 2009, that there were some significant drawdowns in this, in the Fletcher Bay Aquifer. My problem isn't with the science because it shows that under different scenarios, we're going to have drawdowns of those aquifers. My problem is with the policies in the plan that basically accept that drawdown is a price we have to pay for continued growth. And that there is a state mandate for us to continue to grow. I believe that our mandate to protect aquifers trumps that mandate for arbitrary and continued growth, which would be quite significant. The amount of affordable housing that they're supposedly mandating, and I've been following the planning commission somewhat, requires a lot of inclusionary zoning, which means big massive upzoning. Yeah, John, it does. And anyhow, my ask for you is to, is that we need to change the policy in the groundwater management plan. It should not be prioritized. It should not be prioritizing growth and development. It should be prioritizing the sustainable management of our aquifers. That's why I'm here today. That's why a lot of people came. You saw us gathered out front. We want, that's what we want. And I'm asking you to consider directing the city manager to direct staff to correct that deficiency in the groundwater management plan. It should not be prioritizing growth. Should recognize that as a, the only sole source aquifer island surrounded island city surrounded by saltwater in the United States that we have, and also considering the Growth Management Act's requirements to protect groundwater and the importance to future generations of Bainbridge Islanders, that you ask city manager to direct staff to craft a groundwater management plan that makes the sustainable management of aquifers the priority, the overriding priority. That's what they do on Bashan Island. That's what we need to do here. We should not be essentially setting a course for our aquifers to be drawn down in perpetuity in order to accommodate continued growth. So thank you for listening and have a great meeting.
Sharon Cordham.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Cordham. I have had property here on Bainbridge Island since 1976. I am Native American. I am very concerned about the water situation. I honestly can't believe in seven years that the plan, that you're doing nothing about our water. It's very concerning. Also, at the corner of Winslow Way and 305, I was heavily involved in Harbor Square. We believed back then that it's a walking community. Everybody will walk. Guess what? They don't. They drive. And the same is going to be true with that. We don't have the water. We don't have this infrastructure to support all of that building in Winslow. But honestly, today I really feel, standing up here, that you have already, I saw the sign down there that it's already a foregone conclusion. You don't listen to us. You're here. You have to sit there, and you are. You, you might, maybe I should say you do listen to us. You don't hear us. And I have found this very, very, very frustrating. In all the years that I've lived here since 1976, I honestly just can't believe it. I really wish you would listen to us and hear what we are saying. I have heard water is the next war. It's here. It's now, and it's here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Eric Cordham. And while he's getting up, Scott Strickland might as well head up, and then Denise Stotin and Terrence Melia.
I wish I could applaud what my wife just said, but that's a no-go here.
Right. You can applaud for wife. That's okay. Okay.
So I just learned that the Grow Avenue, or the Grow House, the, used to be the Four Swallows, is, the owner there is getting together with the city to demolish the house. It's a historic house. It's built in 1889.
Talk to us so we can.
It's an historic house. It was built in 1889. And it's on, I believe, one of the historic registers. So we don't have a historic commission. There's, the city doesn't listen to us anyhow. There's quite a few commissions that have gone defunct within the past year or two. And the city manager seems to like it that way. So the, the design review board, and then we had a problem with a married couple on the advisory technical commission. So there's a problem here, and I could see it. It's, it's, it's plain as day. You're not listening to the, the groups, the experts. You're not listening to the public. You're doing what you want to do, and it's full steam ahead. I just, I just think this is, this is not the way to run a government. And we have a problem with the water. There's been somebody that's complained about the lack of water, fire hydrants. There's another house besides my neighbors and mine that they had a difficult time putting out the fire. My neighbors burnt to the ground. There's another house that burnt to the ground because they didn't have water in the fire hydrant. And the city is responsible for fire hydrants. There's a report that there's a fire hydrant that's a mile away from a home, and this is pretty prevalent. Put your money into fighting fires with the, and roads instead of this doggone unaffordable, affordable housing projects that you have, which you're trying to get money for. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise, or sorry, I skipped. Scott Strickland.
Hi, everyone. I'm Scott Strickland. Been a long-term resident here on Bainbridge Island for, since 79. I'm going to ask the council to pause the 625 Winslow Project and save the community, the center, the corner for community benefit. The space would have, well, could have a welcoming center. The history museum building could be moved there and make it a true cultural gateway. This will honor the island's rich history while serving everyone. Instead, choose either one of these other sites, the Pavilion Corridor, which I'm told can build up to 140 units, or the 251 Winslow Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Denise Stotin, and many of you know me for my contributions to different community efforts and the arts and humanities on the island. Two things can be true at once. We can care deeply about affordable housing and also care about preserving downtown Winslow, especially the most prominent intersection on the island, the threshold, where everyone debarks from the ferry. Think back to your first trip to Bainbridge, stepping off the ferry, seeing Winslow's small town charm and feeling the slower pace of the island. That first impression is everything. That impression is shaped not only by scale, but by something deeper. Bainbridge is quieter, slower, and marked by a uniquely resident-driven creativity. From fine artists to quirky folk traditions. And we must also acknowledge this island rests on Saquamish land. A heritage nearly erased, honoring that story is essential to who we are today. Now imagine replacing that welcome with a four to six-story building, the tallest side of Winslow Way, built by a developer known for boxy, uninspired structures. That's not an invitation. That's a missed opportunity. This is not about rejecting affordable housing. It's about insisting development be sensitive to place, context and community character. The city owns this land. With ownership comes responsibility to listen to all voices, not just those aligned with one vision. Dismissing residents' NIMBY shuts down dialogue. It is possible to build affordable housing elsewhere while reserving this vital site for something that reflects Bainbridge's identity. Imagine instead a true welcome center, a public plaza or garden, art and sculpture that tell our story, a gallery, local information, cultural messaging, and dare I say, public restrooms, the one thing visitors can never seem to find. A place where residents gather and visitors are oriented, a threshold worthy of Bainbridge. This is a generational decision. Once the gateway is built out, there is no second chance. The backlash is real, and it is your responsibility to respond to it, not shut it out. This is not about our backyard. It's about our island's front door. It should inspire pride, not regret. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Next is Terrence Melia.
Good evening, Council. My name is Terrence Melia. My wife and I purchased our house in Stetson Ridge on Bainbridge Island in 2011. Became full-time Bainbridge residents in 2012. Our daughter graduated from Woodward Middle School and Bainbridge High School. Prior to moving to Bainbridge, I've had various jobs in finance and accounting. I'm also a US Army veteran on active duty during the Vietnam era, stationed in the United States, Korea and Germany. As a veteran, I learned the benefit of housing assistance, i.e. I qualified for a VA loan. That time, I got a 30-year, 7% mortgage and moved into my house for $35. So I am a supporter of getting people into housing because getting into housing ownership, ownership gives them the ability to create wealth. Everyone here that owns a house has that wealth right now, right? That's what we need to look for. We need to look at that. I'm not, I'm not a supporter of giving people something that doesn't create a better life for them. There, if we do that, we have to create another subset of housing. I'm focused on the ability to create people wealth. I do not support, however, because of that, I don't support the current project. Has nothing to do with my current beliefs. It has fundamentally to do with the numbers. And there is, there has been a real lack of numbers. The LIHI website has a one-pager on the project, which I will wave here to everyone to see, right? That one-pager proposes 100-unit development. And if you divide the development costs by the 100 units, you come up with a cost of $504,000 per unit. If you look at the annual affordable housing data that's reported to the Washington State Legislature in the past December, it's prepared by the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. The, and it lists all of the development costs. So it doesn't include land, right? All the development costs. The development costs for the Seattle area is $309,000 per unit. We're getting a proposal from LIHI that's 29% greater than the city of Seattle, right? I'm not sure that makes sense. I think there needs to be questions asked. Additionally, I share the same concerns that various speakers have shared with respect to LIHI. They, they have a track record.
Thank you so much.
Just one, one final thing. The last time I was here was for the island power debate. And you must know how I feel. If I'm here for that, you must know how I feel about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Schremscher. What year was that? What year was the island power debate?
Good evening. Since moving back to Bainbridge Island in 2023, I've listened to residents express their pros and cons regarding this project, 625. From what I've heard, it is not that they object to affordable housing. It is the proposed location that is most problematic and unpopular. As to affordable housing itself, two recent Seattle Times articles on the 26th and 31st of August are concerning. The articles indicated more and more affordable housing providers in Seattle are requesting financial help from the city as apartment vacancies increase. Turns out affordable housing is not that great of a deal compared to for sale options in Seattle. As both Seattle and Bainbridge Island markets are pricey, would the island's affordable housing plan be any different? Particularly as this, at this proposed site. Specific to this particular location, it is obvious, being adjacent to the ferry terminal, it'll cater to Seattle commuters, not those that work on the island. The intersection is also congested, not family-friendly, and will generally, and will generate more noise, traffic and pollution. As to more retail space, one only has to look at the mostly empty commercial space under Harbor Square. Last but not least, the building itself would require massive excavation for a large garage foundation underneath, which will result in a huge wall of concrete as an ugly backstop to the remaining one-story older building on Olympic Drive. Not a welcoming or inspiring first impression of our island. If indeed the city of Bainbridge Island truly wants to provide affordable housing for families and for those who work on the island, the city needs to move the project out of the pricey downtown area and into a more rural, less expensive and family-friendly area on the island. Future affordability for renters should be the driving force for this project if the city is truly sincere about lasting affordability. Please give affordable housing on this island the best chance for success and don't ignore the current affordable housing problems in Seattle as well as the criticisms and unpopularity of the 625 site before going any further forward with this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Tour, then Marsha Cutting, then Joe NASCAR.
Good evening, city council members. Name's actually Michael Toot, just like a train. I had a lot of fun growing up with that name, so, yeah, it was interesting. Council members, neighbors and fellow residents of the island would like to address the 625 issue. And of course, you've heard a lot about it by now. I don't need to recover or go over that territory, but basically what's happened is you've had a wonderful ability presented to you, or capability, I should say. You've had a crowdsourced research project that has been delivered to you here with a big red bow on it. There are pragmatic, measurable, definitively actionable things that have been delivered to you saying, this project is not working. This project is not sensible. This project is not a good fit for the community. You have that ability now to make a wonderful, informed and quality decision that benefits the entire island. I understand a lot of times the council will get a project, it'll be proposed, it'll be discussed, and not a lot of customer, or customer, not a lot of community comment comes back to the council itself. That's not the case here. With both this and with the aquifer situation, you can see how these interrelated relationships are going to affect one another significantly and negatively. Now, in the future, some of you may still be on the boards, some of you may not. What we're afraid of though is that the project will go forward. The negatives, the measurable negatives will occur. And the council will say, gosh, we didn't know. We had no idea. Nobody told us. Well, here's that information. People here can give you more detailed information and presentations on why this would not be a good idea. And I would ask that you consider this, listen to it and make a measured, informed and quality decision for the community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much, Michael. Mike, next, Marsha Cutting.
My name is Marsha Cutting, and I live on Curtis Loop. And I know you want to hear more about housing, but actually I would like to talk about transportation. I know that you're going to consider a measure later this evening about forming a transportation advisory committee. And I hope that you will do that because that is a really significant issue that deserves a body that will give its full attention to that. I say that as a person with a disability, knowing from my service on the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment that the biggest obstacle to people with disabilities finding employment is not, as most people assume, prejudice on the part of employers. That may well exist, but the biggest single impediment is a lack of transportation. Transportation, particularly around here, exists for commuters. But if you're going to work at a, at a store stocking shelves, for example, and you get off at midnight, you're walking home. And a lot of people And a lot of people don't want to do that, and it may not be safe. I'm not sure it's safe to ride a bicycle home at midnight. I don't know. So I really think that we do need a group that will focus on transportation that works for everyone. And to assist you in considering this, I have distributed a paper to you about the week without driving. Yes, that one. I would, I would challenge you to think about a week without driving. Could you do that? Could you exist for a week without driving your car? A third of the people in the US don't drive or can't drive. And they have to get around somehow, and it affects every part of their lives. So we ask you to take this challenge, not to shame you if you can't do it, because we know that it's hard. We know that it may not be possible. But we ask you to consider taking this challenge to see what it's like for those who can't drive. And if you could do a day without driving, even that would give you a sense of what the issues are for people. So I hope that you will consider taking the week without driving challenge. And I hope that you will, um, support the rec, the, um, formation of a transportation advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Next, Joe Nascar. And then Beth Crittenden. Is there a Joe? Nesker? No, okay. If Joe, if you come back. I love his name. I wanted to meet him. Beth Crittenden. Okay. Harvey Gilbert. Okay, good.
Hi, my name is Harvey Gilbert. Um, I'm a Bainbridge Island resident. Uh, thanks for letting my voice be heard tonight. I am a supporter of affordable housing. But I'm not a supporter of this 625 project. I think the city can do much better than this project. So I wanted to be a little specific about why I think the city could do much better than this. It is my understanding that the budget for this project, half of the budget goes for underground parking, and the other half of the budget goes for 75 units or thereabouts. And I'm saying the city can do much better with state-nanated percentages of affordable housing in the city by not building 75 units with these funds, but building 150 units on these funds somewhere else on a bigger lot that doesn't take underground parking, um, as part of the budget. So I just wanted to throw that detail out there if it hasn't come to your attention. Build 150 units instead of 75 on a larger lot. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Priscilla Zimmerman. And then after Priscilla, Jackie Mosley, and then Leland Parker.
I'm a 45-year resident of Bainbridge Island, and I've, for 35 years, I've had my own architectural practice on Bainbridge. I'm an architect and planner. The Winslow Way Highway 305 intersection and its corners form the gateway to Bainbridge Island and Kitsap County from the ferry to All Points West. We desperately need affordable housing on Bainbridge, but this is not the intersection for any dense housing project, affordable or otherwise. City of Bainbridge's proposal for the 625 Winslow Project has demonstrated a complete lack of understanding of the nature and critical importance of this civic corner and heavily trafficked intersection. The 625 Winslow Way corner is the most heavily traveled and congested intersection on Bainbridge Island. Traffic and pedestrian management here is already exceedingly challenging with periods of extreme and sometimes dangerous congestion. Traffic backs up on Winslow Way during peak ferry travel times, creating long periods of gridlock on Winslow Way, both to the west and to the east of 305, and blocking access to and from Winslow. This gridlock certainly would get much worse with the dense housing development on the corner. Responsible best community planning practices dictate that this premier civic corner property be preserved and enhanced for the use of all islanders, residents, and visitors alike. Common sense and accountable planning practices would not advocate any dense housing development, affordable or otherwise, in this location. This proposed dense City of Bainbridge Island housing project, with its gross lack of parking, would adversely affect the survival of downtown Winslow's existing and future businesses. The city has proposed parking well below current code for these units and would make Winslow's already inadequate parking problem significantly worse. Currently, much of the public parking in Winslow is on private property. The City of Bainbridge Island would sacrifice our downtown's viability and constrict access to and from our island at our major regional transportation hub. The city appears to have no long-term sustainable vision that would benefit the entire community and region for many years to come. We need to plan our communities intelligently and sustainably, not based on happenstance. The city is fast-tracking this project while violating their own codes and ordinances at the expense of our entire community. The city's attempt to force this development onto the community without proper public input, vetting, or due process is political gamesmanship at its worst. I end with some examples of what we all recognized as short-sighted political gamesmanship prevailing without any proper planning process. These poorly conceived projects damaged whole communities, some for generations to come. Highway 99 locating the Alaskan Way viaduct between Seattle and its waterfront. Parking lots located along the waterfront in downtown Paulsboro and telephone poles on Winslow Way.
Okay. Thank you, Priscilla. Okay. Next is Jackie Mosley. Or Jackie Leland.
Hi.
We're almost there, folks.
Hi, I'm Jackie Mosley. Um, and as I am concerned about the health of our aquifers, I'm not here to talk about that tonight. I am here to help save the corner. And, but I do want to talk about water in a different way. I haven't heard this talked about at all, brought up at all. And maybe it has, and maybe it's, it's kind of a moot point. But, um, Eagle Harbor is an inundation spot for a tsunami. And so I started to think about this and how, and how that, that might increase the costs of this project that, as some other people mentioned, could be used for a different site. I'm thinking maybe some more reinforcement in the construction process. If, if, nothing else, insurance, the cost of insurance, the increase in insurance policies going forward. And I just, I just think, as I'm echoing other people that have already said this, I think, um, it's not the right spot. And the money that would be used to build affordable housing on that corner could be used, um, a much, much more efficiently on another piece of property. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Leland Parker. And then after Mr. Parker, David Dinam, Bob Jaeger, and Mike Nelson.
Hello, my name's Leland Parker. I live about Agit Pass. Uh, my wife and I moved here five years ago to, uh, escape the poor management of the state of California. While I was there, uh, I, uh, helped found the Sonoma County Ag Preservation in Open Space District, which has preserved over 100,000 acres. I also served two years as chairman of the General Plan Update Committee, which took the two-year process where we had 72 meetings in which we gave the public thousands of hours to voice their opinions on all ranges of subjects. I find it really shocking that this project, this proposal, has come down to this point. And it's the first time that 100 people have come to this room. And I am so impressed with what each one of you has had to say. I wish I could speak so eloquently. And, and these are good folks, and it's one of the reasons why I am so happy and so proud to be a Bainbridge Island, uh, neighbor is because I have good neighbors like this. The idea that, uh, this is all about affordable housing, to me, is a bit of a joke. If you build, if, if you, if you put up 100 units, of which 20% are going to be for affordable housing, that means you get 20 units for every 80 residents that come here from somewhere. So where, where's the pony in the barn? That the affordable units is a Trojan horse, as somebody mentioned earlier. And you can't restrict who gets those units. So if we're lucky, you build 100 units, we get 20, and you get half of those for our fellow residents. And to speak to affordable housing, we're, we're buying this housing because our merchants aren't paying our, their employees enough money. So we're making it up for them. Well, why should we do that? We're going to do it. Everybody wants to do it. But I ask the question. The reason the need is because the employers aren't paying the workers enough money. I also wonder, you know, who are, has there been a study done to identify who the, uh, who the tenants will be? How many, how many people on this, that work on this island need affordable housing? How many? Where do they work? Where do they live now? If you built something, would they move there? So in closing, I'd like to say that everything that everybody else has said, I use as, as, I agree on as support to why the 625 site is an inappropriate site. And as a banker who's financed many, many apartment buildings and hotels, I wouldn't even consider this project. Thank you.
Thank you. David Diamond.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm not here to talk about the overstressing of our aquifer or the poor location of this project. What I'd like to talk about is how do we set up success for affordable housing? So, and I don't think we're setting it up too well right now. I think to, to successfully set up affordable housing for trying to create, um, a community environment, a family environment for people that need this type of housing, I don't think we're on the right tack. But I think we could be, and I don't think there's any reason for us not to be. I mean, I've heard a lot of bad comments about the location. That's, I don't think that location is, is really family-friendly and where you can, like, raise a family of kids or even a, a family with no kids and have a comfortable, friendly environment to live in. I think there probably are other locations on the island. I, I don't know what those locations would be, but I've heard other people mention things like, you know, where were we going to build that hotel down here on Winslow? Or, how big is that stockeye park? Is there room over there? I mean, it, it just seems like there's other situations and locations and environments that would set this up for long-term success for, for affordable housing. And I think, why not? Why not, why not look for those situations? I don't know how hard that's been studied and how hard that's been looked at. But I'm sure you guys have worked on it some, right? So I just think there's, maybe there's a little bit of room there to continue to dig and to look for a different location. Because if I had a young family or I needed affordable housing, that corner's not where I would want to live. Free's coming in all night, and they're tooting their horns, and you know, it's just not, not a very family-friendly environment, I would say. So I think there's other opportunities. And so I hope you guys take the time to look for those situations that would set it up for long-term success. So that's what I would like to see you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next is Bob Jaeger, and then Mike Nelson. Then after that, Kathy Weiss, Laura, and then Jenny Hec, Hectron, or Hectrovert. Thanks, Hectrovert.
Hi there. Well, I was going to talk about, I was practicing my speech. And everybody has said my speech for me, so I really don't even have to talk about my original thoughts. The one thing I think I'm a little naive on was that I thought the housing development would be for residents of the island who work here. So that's not the case. If I live in Seattle, I can come over here and live there. And as a taxpayer, I would pay for that. I don't think that made me feel comfortable, so I learned something. There's other things I've learned tonight. What's important to me is affordable housing for everybody. I think we need affordable housing for seniors, for all people. And we need it on the island, not opposed to it. I'm opposed to that location, especially if you ever drive down 305, which I do frequently during the week. I go to Rotary, I go down to go shopping, I meet friends in Winslow. What amazes me is somebody came up with the idea that they're going to put 300 to 500 people on that corner where you can't even get through it on some days, especially during the summer. Try to make a right turn on to Winslow in that strange development that I guess the state operates, not the city of Bainbridge. Because I learned that from the police department. So that's dangerous in itself. But to put children and seniors like me in that location is a disaster. It's not a good location. But again, I'm not opposed to it. But what I do want to advocate is being a Rotary Club has brought me a lot of new ways of looking at how people live. One of the privileges I have is I'm a member of the Food Committee. The Food Committee, we provide food for children on the island during holidays. During the year, they get food at school. But on the breaks, we provide food through our auction where we raise the money. We turn around and we go buy food primarily at Safeway, who gives us a discount. That food is distributed at residences on the island. Uh, I have been doing that during the summer, which is one of our big times. But what I've noticed is that there's affordable housing on the island already. That looks terrible. I would not allow my father, my mother, my children to live in these places. I think we all need to go out and take a look up and down High School Road. There's four apartment buildings that I deliver food to. There's one senior facility I deliver food to. You would not put your families there. I wouldn't put my families there. I'm embarrassed for this island to have facilities like that that is affordable housing. Take the money, apply it to those properties, make them livable, and there is space up there to do more building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Nelson.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the record, Mike Nelson, Concerned Citizen. Thank you for your service. Today, I'm speaking out against massive growth. Don't worry, I will be back in on Thursday to talk about 625. If the City Council and the Planning Commission has its way, Bainbridge Island will cease to be anything unique. It will cease to have any special character. It will look no different than Mercer Island, or Bellevue, or Ballard, or the rest of Seattle. It will look no different than the countless communities across Washington State that have been handed over to the developers. Communities that have become the victims of massive upzoning and massive growth. The current plan is to significantly increase the height and density of buildings, which will lead to much of our quaint and historic downtown being replaced with ultra-dense, se- Seattle-style condo complexes and other ultra-dense buildings. This plan will mean five-story buildings on Winslow Way and all across the rest of the central core, the ferry zone and High School Road Zone. It'll mean four-story buildings across Madison and Ferncliff. It would mean max density in the ferry zone that is 286% of what it is today and 800% of the current base density. It would mean max density in the High School Road Zone that is 444% of what it is today and 1,333% of current base density. This is incredible density. This is massive upzoning and this is massive growth. The planning commission is also working on upzoning for what it called, what's called middle housing, right? Which means rezoning, single-family homes as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, et cetera. This is despite the fact that Bainbridge Island is exempt from HB 1110, the middle housing bill. And despite the fact that if done broadly, this could double, triple, or quadruple our population. And why are we exempt from that bill? Because of our sole source aquifer. Yes, because we don't have enough water. The people do not support this level of growth and our aquifers cannot support this level of growth. Just look at the modeling studies in the groundwater management plan. We are pursuing a dangerous path where the population growth we are planning for is far above the assumed population growth for both the mid and high-impact scenarios. This could mean our deepest aquifer, the Fletcher Bay Aquifer, dropping below sea level by year 50, causing seawater intrusion and making it unusable. This could mean portions of the glacial marine aquifer dropping below sea level by year 50. This could mean south end production wells dropping below sea level by year 50. Is this the future we want? Do we want to be Mercer Island? Do we want to be Bellevue or Ballard? Let's not squander our natural resources until our small-town island becomes uninhabitable. Let's keep Bainbridge Bainbridge. Thank you.
Next is Kathy Weiss. What's up? Gavel? Okay, gavel. Or sorry, you're not supposed to be clapping. I've said it several times. I don't think I have to gavel to get it, so.
Hi, council. Good evening. Thanks for serving. If it looks like a duck and it cracks like a duck, it's a duck. I'm opposed to the Winslow 625 plan because of its size and scope. Building an apartment building turns property into private property. It strips that space away from the community. Housing can be placed in a number of areas on the island and new ideas are percolating every day. Just read Facebook. But the entrance to our city is only there. The opportunity cost of what could have been is too high. Small shops, restaurants, community venues, not a massive apartment complex that builds a wall at the entrance to our city. We are Seattle's number one tourist destination. We should be really proud of that. We're even being touted for next year's World Cup as a thing to do. Go to Bainbridge. I love the idea of a tourist corridor. That brings money to the island. It's unfortunate that this conversation has turned into an agenda on affordable housing, when really at that corner, it's about any housing. Affordability is irrelevant. Housing does not belong on that corner. It's not a swan, it's a duck. Regarding transparency and the upzoning of Winslow in general, the museum's windows are 28 feet tall. I encourage anybody to drive by and take a look at 28 feet when we're talking about 65 feet, 55, 65 feet in a lot of these documents. If you all as city council really want to help get the word out to the residents, I suggest having a fire truck. Bring it down to the Winslow 625 location. Raise the ladder up to 55, 65 feet, whatever the current conversation is about. And let us all see really what upzoning is going to look like. And I'll stop there because everybody has already said the rest of it.
Hi, council. I'm Laura Lant off of Hidden Cove Road. I appreciate your taking all of this comment tonight. It's been a lot and I appreciate that you're all sitting there and we've had bathroom breaks and water breaks. Thank you. I too am speaking to 625 Winslow Way. I think that the comments you've heard here tonight are a lot for you all to think about. I think there's questions surrounding the finances, the management, the zoning, the public participation and engagement in this whole project from beginning to end. I think that there's questions about our water resources, our sewer capacities and more. So if nothing else, let this evening give you pause and give you guys a, a chance. We're all witnesses. There's a lot to think about. Pause. Pause on the next steps. Thursday, day after tomorrow, there will be a, a series of public participation meetings for the 625. One is for the 625 project itself. The other is for the zoning required for the 625 to happen. The 625 project, the public participation meeting is a required second step of the application process. So if you don't think the project is going forward as we're all sitting here, it is. All right? Be aware. Show up on the 11th, come to the public participation meeting and make the same comments that were made here, make them again. And hopefully those comments will come back to council. I very much wish there was a way for council to dialogue because I feel as if plenty of thoughts are going through your minds right now. Perhaps some of you have some alternate locations that you've already looked at. And it would be great to hear publicly and on the dais and on the record that you too have doubts about this project. All right? So please consider a pause and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Next Jenny Hextrower, then Bob Holiday, and then Matthew Coats. And then the last three after that.
Hello? Okay. So good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Hextrower. I've been here for 26 years and raised a family here. And I'm here to speak in support of the petition Bainbridge Island's gateway deserves better, to save the corner at 625 Winslow Way. So this is not just another parcel of land. The corner is the front door to our island, as we have all said. It sits across from the museum of art and just steps from the ferry. For every visitor who steps onto Bainbridge, it is one of the first images they see. And for every resident returning home, it is one of the last impressions before leaving our beautiful island. It is rare to have a site so visible, so central, and so symbolic of who we are as a community. Because of that, the decisions you make about this property will echo for generations, which we have said, all of us. Once it is developed, the opportunity to use this space in a way that truly reflects Bainbridge's character and values will be gone forever. We only get one chance to get this right. The petition before you is not about stopping progress. It's about making sure progress reflects thoughtful stewardship. We are asking you to pause current development plans to preserve this unique property and to allow a full, inclusive process where the entire community can weigh in on our future, its future. There are many appropriate places on the island for affordable housing and other needed initiatives, but the corner is different. This is a once-in-a-generation site that belongs to the public, belongs to the public. Its highest and best use should be determined not in haste, but with transparency, creativity, and a long-term vision. And if you ever read about the Eiffel Tower, that, I, I don't want to get into that and how they did that, but it's not happening here. There was competition involved in that for a very creative, very special place. It wasn't decided by whomever. So I, I won't go into that. My husband's a builder. Anyway, I ask you to consider what kind of message Bainbridge Island sends if we treat our gateway as just another development parcel. Instead, let's show that we value beauty, civic pride, and community input. By protecting the corner, you are protecting a piece of Bainbridge identity. So tonight, on behalf of the many who have signed this petition, I respectfully urge you to halt the current development process, which we know is going forward. Preserve the site and commit to a broader community dialogue about its future. Thank you. And.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, Bob Holiday.
Good evening, folks. You've been sitting there for two hours and 10 minutes. You all deserve an award. You want to take 10 seconds of my time and stand up and stretch? Okay, fine. There you go. Okay, so I came here in 1989 with my family. My three kids went to Bainbridge High School. At the time, I was working for US Customs. I did 35 years, who counts? I don't know, with feds. Three of my kids went to Bainbridge High School. Okay, we now live over on Wing Point. Okay. So one of the things that I did with the feds is I worked in the oil, with the oil and gas industry. And whenever an oil company drilled a well on the ground, the first thing that they did is they called in Schlumberger and some reservoir engineers. And they figured how much we have there. They can figure out, I won't say with great accuracy, but they can tell you how many MCF of gas are in the ground and how many barrels of oil are in the ground. Have you guys done this with the reservoirs? Do you know how many millions of gallons you have in the ground? And until you do, you need to stop and do it. Okay? And you need to publish that number. Okay? All right, so let's go on just a little bit. One of the things that I did with customs is I developed a lot of very important projects. Okay? Not patting myself on the back, but they were all very successful. They're still in operation and they've gone through planned upgrades. And the reason is, is because I identified my customers and I asked them, what do you want? And they told me and I built it. Okay? I don't see any of this as going on with the 625 project. Okay? Not even one little bit. When we were building these projects, we use a process called evolutionary acquisition. And which you admit that you really don't know everything that's going to happen throughout the life of the project. Okay? So what that means is you don't know what's going on or what the best use of 625 Winslow Way is. I suggest you stop until you figure it out. So here's another thing. I'm an engineer. Engineers like to build. Okay? You got a nice parcel of, of land out there. Architects like to design, engineers like to design, the contractors like to build so they can make some money and move away. Okay? But just because it's there doesn't mean you have to build on it. Okay? And by the way, if we keep going the way you're going, you're not going to have to worry about visitors coming to Bainbridge because they're going to get fed up and they're going to go to Poles Bowl. Poles Bowl's taken a pretty good share, you know, tear of their place. Finally, here's what I'm going to suggest. We need a commitment from you folks to develop a document that shows everything that's going on with Project 625. Everything. How much it's going to cost, all of that. Okay? Mail it out to everybody on the island and put a little mailer on there and a little checkbox, yes or no? Four seconds. You guys have a good night and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. And then Stephanie Reese, then Elizabeth Maurer, and then last but definitely not least, Malcolm Gander. Don't see him. Oh, I didn't.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matthew Coats. I'm an architect on the island. For those of you that don't know, I designed the art museum. I've lived on the island about 26 years. First of all, thank you for your patience this evening. I know it's, it's been a long one, but this process means a lot to this community. Tonight I want to put three things very clearly into the public record. I have a gift for you. Our community has spoken. You're hearing some of it tonight, but I stand here representing 850 people who have signed the petition to save the corner. They're here. Each and every one of these pages is a heartfelt statement from somebody in this community. These are teachers, shopkeepers, seniors. They deeply care about how this corner is used. They want you to take it seriously. And I want you to take this seriously. I want you to read it and I want you to take hold of the weight of this in your hands as you read every page, because there are comments in here that you need to see. And I'd like to respectfully ask this to be taken in as public comment for public record. I will also be emailing you a PDF. I didn't want to print, you know, seven of those. But I think seeing it in person is relevant. The second thing I'd like to address is that, as many of you know, I have been working with others very, very diligently to bring forth other alternative sites for a project that you could develop on other than this site. There are many others that you already know of, Suzuki, the Senior Center. But the two that we have brought forward, uh, one is the 251 Winslow Way project, where the hotel project started to emerge or was tried. That particular site is really, actually a really good site. It's in a neighborhood area. It'd be much, much cheaper to park and you can get about the same number of units on that site. The second option is the pavilion to Wyatt Way. We don't need to change the zoning there and we can get in easily 100 units. If you really pack them in, by my calculation, you get 140 units. That site is much closer to grocery, schools, transit. There's already a bus stop there. And it's a much better, quieter, livable setting. Oh my God. Well, I'll just say, I've provided those options. I've also provided you with a concept for the corner. Please take it under advisement. If you could hand these out, please. That went by very quickly. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next is Stephanie Reese, then Elizabeth Maurer, and then Malcolm Gander. Oh, I see him. He's out there.
Hello, City Council. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of us. So much was already said tonight, so I just will try to keep this brief. I moved to the island several years ago and I learned so much about our community, but it took time. I learned specifically, I want to speak about the Japanese community, the Intipino community, and the Filipino communities of the island that I learned mostly about through doing the Asian Arts and Heritage Festival. And I, while, you know, everybody in here believes in affordable housing, I also oppose 625 because I do think it is a beautiful gateway to our island and a place that we can highlight the history of our island and the history of the people here and, and invite people to go to the historical museum or to the Japanese Exclusion Memorial, or to invite people to visit our wineries or to learn about the art that we have here. Every single event that we have on this island, we do a land acknowledgement. And I think that's really, really significant. What I feel was lacking, or I have felt is lacking after going to dinner with some friends from the Intipino community is your engagement with said communities to acknowledge the, we're talking about land here, literal land. And yet I don't think that there's been enough engagement with said communities. been enough engagement with said communities and the history and people who have roots on this island from the communities I mentioned and beyond for many generations to find out what they believe that this land means to them. And what a beautiful opportunity we have to create a literal acknowledgement of the thing that we say almost every day at every event. So I really, really hope that you take that into consideration, that you look at people who might not be in this room. Sadly, many people from those communities that I have mentioned, 6252, have never even heard about this at all. And I asked the question, why? And they said, oh, they don't really care about what we think. So I'm here to say that please care about what those people think and what we think and to the greater community. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we know. Okay. There are two folks left. I think for the last two, really going to show that we all listened, right? Okay. Thank you. I see some yeses. Okay, Elizabeth Maurer. And then Malcolm Gander.
Thank you. I am a transplant from Seattle a year and a half ago. And I basically came here tonight. I'm really nervous. I'm sorry. This is also my first council. Shake it off. Okay. I'm a dog groomer. I actually happen to be Findley's dog groomer. The, back to the dog. Anyway, I am a dog groomer on the island and that would, I think, speak for itself in that I am one of those people that would benefit from affordable housing. However, I want to say that I wouldn't want to live there for all of the reasons that everybody in the room have said. It's not very, it's not a great place to live. It wouldn't be community oriented. It's not, it doesn't, Bainbridge Island is an experience. It's not a location. And the reason I say that is because when I got here a year and a half ago, I didn't have a lot. I had very little money and I came under some false pretenses that my life would be better than it ended up being. I was homeless at first when I got here. And through some amazing people and some awesome community, I have been able to rise above my situation and have started a business of my own here on the island. And although I was going to put my tail between my legs, for lack of a better word, and go back to Seattle, my community came together and supported me and helped me. And that's what Bainbridge Island means to me. And I feel like when we take people who don't have a lot of money and we just stick them in a spot, we're not really doing a good service to them. We're not treating them like community members. I really support the idea of, and I'm not political, obviously, but I do support the idea of putting affordable housing throughout the island. And people, like-minded people think alike. And the people who have helped me and supported me and have brought me up to the level that I'm at right now, that I can actually speak in front of a council, means the world to me. And it is, Bainbridge Island is my life now. It is where I want to be. And I'll tell you, when my children come here, we don't go to Winslow. We go to the trails. We go see Pia. We go to the free concerts. We do all the things that Bainbridge has to offer. Winslow is just another town full of bustling shoppers. So for me, I would like you to just think about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Malcolm Gander.
Thanks to the previous commenter, those were some insightful comments. Okay. The following comments I'm going to make are fact-based, and these are facts that I got from public records requests from Kitsap Public Utility District and the city of Bainbridge Island, thanks to Christine Brown and other people for their longstanding follow-through. The city council and planning commission have spent a lot of time in the last eight months talking about upzoning, densification of the downtown, and expanding the boundaries of the downtown area. It is very wrong to be having this discussion without talking about the drinking water The limitations of available water downtown, okay? Talk about downtown available drinking water must dictate how we grow. I know you don't want to hear that. People like Mr. Tovar, I remember listening to him, say, well, we can do this and we can do that and we can worry about infrastructure as we go. He's a planner? Sorry, I just, that was a comment. I know it's a cut, but I just had to say that. How we grow has to be a data-driven decision. This means looking at historic water production out of the production wells and the water levels in those production wells. Kobe has 11 wells that provide water to the downtown area. Three of those are public. Fletcher Bay PW, Sands 1 and 2, they supply 75% of the water. They're in the Fletcher Bayocofer. That's the Deepocofer. And then we have seven wells that supply the other 25% out of the head of the bay well field. And then the 11th well is the Commodore well. We pump that dry. There's very little water in that. Okay? These wells are all being pumped to their maximum. What does that mean? It means that if we increase pumping out of these production wells that serve the downtown, the levels are going to go down, there's going to be less water produced, and eventually there's going to be seawater intrusion. Yeah, that's fine. I got the 30 seconds. The city has not told us where these, they have not addressed the fact that in the next 20 years, we're going to need more wells under any growth scenario to grow the downtown. Okay? If you guys are reading information in the groundwater management plan and you look at the data, you're going to know this. I have a lot more things to say, but be aware, we don't have enough water now for the downtown growth that we've all been talking about. We cannot talk about this without talking about water.
Thank you, Malcolm. And I would say that's an exclamation point on this evening. That is, oh, you're, it's okay. Last but not least, go ahead. And one, okay. Sorry about that. Yep.
I had a work late. Alrighty, thank you. My name is Mary Rain. I'm a resident of Bainbridge Island for many years, more than my gray hair reveals. Thank you. I know this is a tough job, being on the city council. It's hard to please everybody. I want to address two pieces here, both regarding these plans. 625 is the wrong location for housing. Many people have spoken about all kinds of welcoming and it is a traffic nightmare for your thousands of constituents who rely on that ferry for work, for medical, for medical care, and for all kinds of other vital services. Putting a high-density housing unit in a corner that's already a mess is insane. Please do not, again, low income, high income, I don't care, any income, that corner needs to be fixed. And I actually think that land should be purchased by Washington Department of Transportation to clean up their mess. What is happening here is the wrong process. You clearly have a challenge with communicating with your constituents in a way that has built trust. You have massive opposition to this project. It's rushed. It's not transparent. You're proposing upzoning, ignoring what we all know is a water crisis as well as a other infrastructure crisis. We don't have enough money for our roads. That's not being prioritized. We don't have enough wastewater treatment to accommodate this upzoning planning that is under discussion here, and actually more than under discussion, underway. Affording, affordable housing is a broad national issue. The solutions are not one size fits all. We do not have a clear statement on which subset of affordable housing we're trying to address in this project. Is it for seniors? Is it for the teachers and police officers and firefighters? That is often the reason that we're, you know, that many people will reference bringing up affordable housing needs. Is it for low-income service workers? Is it for people who are currently unhoused and experiencing a housing crisis? We don't have a clear statement on what this particular project is trying to solve, what the tenants are of what you're trying to, of how you're going to solve that, and then what the specific requirements are that you plan to meet for that project. You will be doomed to fail with any project if you don't have that clarity in your own planning. And I think you will not get community support unless you're actively and proactively communicating that to your constituents, the people who voted you into office in the first place. So please, get clear on what you're trying to do. Do it somewhere else, absolutely not there, and communicate it with your constituents. Thank you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. What was your name? So I can add you. You're, sorry. Okay, go ahead. And what's your name?
My name is Larry Vetch. I've been on the island a lot, lot, lot less time than the 18 to 59 or whatever years. And so I don't have a lot to say. I was on the planning commission in the great city of Newcastle, which had 10,525 people. And they found a way in a city that was surrounded, that didn't have a lot of land, they found a way to work together with the community to find affordable housing. The last thing I'll say, I'm here because of that ferry that we took many times from Seattle and other places on the east side. And I don't want to see that change. It's just too beautiful. And that would be a nicer. Thank you for listening, and I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Sarah.
Sarah, you can just speak quickly. And then that's it, that's it, because we do have to.
I'm the last one. I promise. So my name is Sarah Merrill. I'm a resident of Bainbridge Island only about five years, actually. So, and I came late because I'm a working mom. So I wanted to make sure to come here today to address you all as maybe a minority here. I know a lot of moms who'd love to have come, but we have our priority, which is our families. Thankfully, my husband's home with my child tonight. The things that I would like to say about the 625 Winslow project are that I identify as a progressive. I think that's important in this discussion, to self-identify. I think there is a lot of opposition to this project from both sides of the aisle. I think this is being unfairly painted as a NIMBY or opposition to diversity or affordability on the island. And I certainly don't feel like that's my sentiment. And everyone who shares my kind of similar demographic on the island feels the same way. The things that I would ask of the council about this project are to consider, I don't have any transparency on what this is costing the community as far as investment. What is our return on investment here from a priorities standpoint? My personal priorities are, as everyone here knows, our school district had a funding deficit that we are still dealing with. I have a child currently in school. If this housing were to be built, there's no childcare. There's no full-time childcare on the island. Currently, all of the full-time childcare that is available has waiting lists of over a year plus. This affects affordability on our island. We have no 24/7 emergency rooms on the island. Most of our staff from the school district, from our emergency services, do not live on the island. We, the district had to close for nearly a month in February this year because we had a two-week break that also was amended by, I think it was, snow delays. And it was exacerbated by the fact that several of our committee helpers, like teachers and other staff, don't live on Bainbridge and could not get here because of snow conditions. So as we consider affordability, as we consider upzoning and diversity, all of these wonderful things that I think most of us want, I would really ask that we consider how this project scores against the priorities of our community. And certainly, given all the wonderful enthusiasm or anti-enthusiasm, I should say, on this project, it feels appropriate to be more transparent and be more community-minded about what your constituents' priorities are. This feels like kind of a road to nowhere in that these families would not be able to support themselves with the lack of infrastructure around this project in many ways. So thank you for your time.
And what was your name again? I'm so sorry.
Sarah Merrill.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, folks, with that, because you were so good all night, I can, you can have one big applause for yourselves who finished names. With that, public comment is closed. Yes, and council's going to take a little break after.
Okay. And council announcements. Councilmember Milwaukee.
Thank you. Um, since we had, our meeting was canceled last week, I was, uh, then had the opportunity to visit, I mean, uh, be, go to the Friends of the Waterfront private party at the pier. And they had a great, and if you haven't been there, it's just a fantastic new project. And on Thursday, something that Mayor Ashley and Councilmember Dietz were at, we were at a luncheon for the American Legion.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, the National Commander, I gotta write his name down. His name was.
Dan Wiley.
Dan Wiley. And so he came, and the reason why he came was one of our islanders, good friend, Frank Stoll. His grandfather was the first original commander of the creation of the American Legion. And it's been passed on in the family, puts a gigantic painting of his father. And so he gifted that to our local American Legion. Was quite a, quite a thrilling thing, I think. We would have to read, and, uh, sorry, God, two calendars.
I had mentioned this, I don't know if I, but, uh, we did receive a ton of public comment today. And if anyone wants to add to their announcements or wants to say anything in general or back, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry. Come back to me, my calendar's out. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Schneider, then Councilmember Dietz.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say something in response to all of the public comment. But first, I just want to say that Friday was an exceptionally fun advocacy ride for not just electeds, but I think the purpose was to get electeds out on bicycles, to go between Pulse Bow and Bainbridge Island. And, um, unlike the normal experience, we had a police escort. But then I guess when you get that bigger group, you kind of need a police escort. But it was fun anyway. So that's my announcement. And then I just have a few comments. And of course, now that the room is more or less emptied out, and thank you for those of you who are staying, we do like to respond. So for the record, because who knows? Maybe somebody will bother to look at this video later on. My first comment is that this is just deja vu all over again. It was six years ago when we were having this exact same conversation about Suzuki. And there was vehement opposition to Suzuki. Yes, we all are for affordable housing, but, 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 not here. It's not the right thing here. And, um, so there's that. And then on, uh, on water. This hasn't, I've mentioned this myself, but it hasn't come up that much yet. And I think that it deserves a fair amount of council consideration. I might have, I might be misquoting Jason McLennan. He's the, um, he's the architect who's the founder of the Living Building Challenge. But I was in the room with him early when I was, shortly after I was, um, on council. And I heard him say that an average single-family residence can collect enough water from the sky, not from groundwater, but from the sky, to, assuming that you can capture it. And he has ways of, you know, his, um, his Living Building Challenge will capture it, can last all year. So we live in a very wet place, this Pacific Northwest. And if we change the way we think about water, and if we don't assume that it's going to get pumped from ancient aquifers, I don't know, maybe we'll have enough water. And yes, we need to talk about that more. It has not come up enough. And then third, um, the, just some, uh, so people were saying five or six stories about, um, the six-two-five Winslow. It is four stories. It is four stories. It is the same as what is zoned for Winslow, forty-five feet if you do underground parking. So the reason that there is a need for some additional height on that building is because by the time you go down, going down that hill and create this triangle and average it out, it turns out that you need more. But if you look at the drawings, it's four stories. It's not five stories. It's not six stories. So, um, I just want to, my vision for Bainbridge is to have a balanced Bainbridge. And a balanced Bainbridge means that we need to have people who work here. They need to have a place to live here. Their children need to have a place to go to school. And yes, their children could walk to school from this site. When I was five years old, I walked a mile by myself to get to kindergarten. And I know that sounds like I walked uphill both ways in a snowstorm, but it is true. I went back to my little town and I, and I measured it. So kids could go to school from this location. And, um, a balanced Bainbridge also means that someone who is living in a large house out in the conservation zone might want to sell that home, cash out of it, so that they have a retirement. And yet they don't want to leave Bainbridge. They want to live someplace on Bainbridge. And so wouldn't it be nice for them to have a market rate home on Bainbridge? And right now, there's, none of that is being built. We're not allowing it basically to get built in Winslow. Anyway, um, it was instructive, difficult, sad, and instructive to listen to all the comments. And I really hope we do have more conversation and fact-sharing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Uh, Councilmember Dietz.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and, and thank you, uh, I almost said Leslie, Councilmember, Councilmember Schneider, for bringing up the Sound Olympic bike ride that the mayor and myself and, uh, Councilmember Schneider and Hannah from staff. I think we were the Bainbridge reps. So there was about forty or so of us, and we rode a bike, e-bikes from, principally e-bikes. I think Hannah, you had a regular bike, but from Pulse Bow to the ferry terminal on Bainbridge. And it was tremendous. It was instructive. It was fun. We would stop, like we stopped at Agapass Bridge, and let's talk about Agapass Bridge. And we heard all the issues with that bridge. And it's, it's not good. So, but there's no money to replace it. So we really appreciate the crowd tonight, or the audi, uh, the people coming. This is very, very important. This is one of the biggest decisions we can make, probably this year, I would say, this, this project. So this is a project worthy of our, of our community conversation. So I really appreciate people coming. And, and people need to know that there are others with other opinions, too. I mean, we, they did not come tonight. So we are, we do hear people from different opinions. And I, the way I look at this is I'm still seeing the process develop. There's a planning commission meeting this Thursday. I'm gonna be there. I want to listen. So I, I have no predetermined outcome myself. I want to hear the process develop. We often talk about the importance of process. Well, that's what I am doing here. And I'm looking at other alternatives. So I spoke with John Eisenhower on Monday about a potential, uh, very large affordable housing project at the Pavilion property. So, um, this council member and others, we're, we're interested. We're interested in other projects, but they have to be viable. I mean, if we don't have it at sixty-five, where? Okay, we need, we need, uh, we need to put it somewhere. And I, I did get it. I appreciated hearing Suzuki. Some people spoke in favor of it. As Councilmember Schneider said, I wrote, well, remember, that room was full of people against Suzuki. So it was a bit of a deja vu. So, but I'm, I wrote down the folks who were in favor of Suzuki. So I'm gonna be calling them. And then when that, when that, when Suzuki, Suzuki's gonna come back, folks. Just saying. So lastly, because I, I know it's late, I do have regular office hours, uh, I, on Saturdays. And this is where anyone can come, talk to me about anything, preferably city-related. Ten to noon, it's cups, espresso, the Saturday. So I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fantry Johnson.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, this was interesting to have so many people come. I, I just, I kind of remember when we first started this. And the whole idea was, um, tearing down the old police station. And we had a room full of people who was against that because that was the star of the corner. It was. And then what, whatever will we do with that clock? You know, that was the big deal. And, um, I, I just wish people would have stayed throughout the process to see all of the information that we had, all of the surveys that we did, all of the studies that we did, all of the people that we talked to. I, I wish they would have stayed to see that. I heard so much wrong information. And I heard it repeated over and over and over. You know, we, we don't have to comply with anything, is what I heard. We're a single-source aquifer, which we are. So that automatically means we don't have to apply with nothing. No, that's not true. There's gonna be a big wall. No, that's not true. We don't have, we are. But that does not mean we don't have to comply with what the state is telling us to comply with. That was wrong. Okay? The, the, yeah. Because people don't stay in here at all. They, someone's feeding them this and that. And it's on Facebook, so it must be right. Seattle issues with Lehigh are not our issues with Lehigh. I'm just gonna say that. Now, you can research it, or you can just keep saying we're gonna have those same problems. Yeah, I just, it bothers me that the very people that this is gonna help have been fed that same wrong information to where they come up and say, no, we don't want it either. You don't know what you want because you don't know what we're doing. Because you're listening to wrong information. And that hurts people. That's gonna hurt people. I'm just saying it. It's gonna hurt people who really need it. And that's what's not fair. Because this is not a political game that we're playing here. We're talking about people who need to live somewhere, not people who've been here a hundred years and think that because they've been here a hundred years, that nobody else should live here. That's what we're talking about. One after the other. I've been here nine hundred years. I've been here twenty-five years myself. And I'm glad I got a place to live, but I want to see other people have a place to live, too. I'm not that important that I don't want other people to live here. It won't mess up the character of the island. We all love the character of the island. I don't want this to be another Suzuki, where the next time it comes around, it gets knocked down all the time. We could have this, but no, not here, not there. Oh, I got a hundred and fifty places I can put it. But you don't own any land there. But you're gonna put it there. But you don't own no land there. How you gonna put it there? Who gonna build it? Where's your developer? Where's your plan? You got nothing. Thank you for letting me get that out.
Thank you, Councilmember Fantry Johnson. Uh, Councilmember Milwaukee.
I hope we all feel better. Okay.
You know, I got a toothache.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, I was mentioning, I have a, I'm glad we did the senior proclamation, because I'll be meeting them tomorrow morning. Um, and thanks, Councilmember Schneider, for bringing up Suzuki, because it also reminds me of, well, first of all, thanks everyone for coming out. I mean, that's really important. Most people, and, and we had many people who said it, this is the first time I've been to the city council in all the years I've lived here. So I thank you for your courage. I know that's a hard thing to do, to speak out to the public and all the nerves. But we're friendly people up here. We, we hang out. We're nice guys. So thank you for sharing that. And to me, it felt like a public hearing. I mean, I think we should take all these comments and consider it as such for our future things. Count, I mean, I think, can we do that? We can use these comments as forward comments in a future public hearing decision process on this, I hope. Well, speaking of information, and I, let's see how this works. So, yeah, there we go. This is the city website. And you click on the second box, projects, and right at the top, it is the six-twenty-five project. And yeah, on, here's the website. And it has timeline on, and I want to encourage people. And I want to encourage people, as Councilmember Franklin Johnson mentioned, that line right there, see on the right side of the page, that is the outline of all of the activities. And I remember it because it was my birthday in two thousand twenty-two, when we first started talking about what are we going to do about this property? And so there it's, so to the customer's point, there isn't been hiding. Maybe not have been as involved or intention, but there has been a couple of years of process. And I just thought of one. Oh, God. Oh, jeez. Back. Sorry. I'm right here. This chart, it says who will live here. So we have, we have looked at this. And if I, if the council may, I'll just read this section. Thank you. A tenants will be low income qualified up to eighty percent. Yeah, eighty percent of county, county area income. And that means area median income, the average salaries of people throughout area. As long as the average tenant income is no greater than sixty percent of that income. And for a two-person household, that's about fifty-six thousand dollars. And the people who can be qualified for that, and we just have a whole list, healthcare manager, optometrist technician, production supervisor, carpenter, sales associate, tour coordinator, restaurant server, dental technician, barber, hairdresser, childcare provider, bartender, seniors on low income, seniors are on fixed income, fixed income, bakery manager, grocery clerk, me cutter cook, landscaper, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of those folks to point of some of the comments tonight, we have thought about that carefully and we want that to be this island that, at least I remember. And we talk about the island character. I moved here in ninety-seven and when I moved here, one of the things and a lot of the comments here tonight that I really loved was back then, even though there was some income disparity, it wasn't as great. And attorneys live next door to bartenders and folks. We had to, it was truly integrated in terms of socioeconomic. And so that's what we're trying to get back to, and we've said this. And by the way, seventy-five percent of our employees don't live here. And the city, city survey, I think it's like seventy-eight percent citywide of all the businesses don't live here. That means they travel here somewhere. And so we're missing that socioeconomic demographic. We need young families. So one way to do that is to have some sort of, of building to bring them in. However, I am open to hearing these ideas. There's been some interesting proposals of swapping one piece of land for another. But as Councilmember Franklin Johnson, who owns that property, that's the, that's the real rub. If there's a way to work that out, if that landowner is willing to donate it to the city or something, you know, okay, we'll look at that. Or some other, some other credit. But those are, these are all the nuts and bolts that we have to really be responsible and fill out. It's easy to draw something out. It's another thing to do two years of work. So it is a process, as Councilmember Dietz mentioned, and I think it can be organic. Let's look at this, but we are on a timeline. And so the ideas have to be able to fit into our process.
Member, okay, Deputy Mayor.
We've, we've done something unusual, I think, and I want to contribute my own reflections and, and reporting on what's been keeping me busy and what's been on my mind. I've actually spent some of my time because my, it shows up in my email and I'm really prompted to look at things on next door. My name gets mentioned there and I've weighed in myself and the give and take is sometimes, sometimes okay, sometimes it's really wrong. Because you find out what people want to say about you, whether it's true or not. If they've got a case against you, you're going to hear about it. And it's hard for me to, to just try to be, well, here's some details to think about. Here's, here's what I'm, here's what I actually care about, not, not massive up zoning or massive growth or massive anything, but problems that are pervasive and that are very hard to address. So that's what connects me with the planning commission and its work. I'm the liaison and I was there for, on the third of September, not long ago, from one to five and then through dinner with the planning commissioners and some, and city staff. And then from six to nine, that there was a marathon meeting that I think got a lot accomplished. Some people commented about it, about it, that it was all about up zoning and all about middle housing, when it should have been about something different, something on the mind of an interested non-participant in, in the discussion. The, the work of Joe Tovar is a very important part of the planning commission's work. And we have extended his contract. It's money well spent. It's money that is necessary at this point. And I think the, the positive dynamic between Mr. Tovar and the planning commission is developing step by step. And it's going to pay off very well in the future. I also, let's see, one other thing, I, I briefly took part in a race equity advisory committee meeting along with Mayor Matthews yesterday afternoon, but I had to go off to meet a constituent and walk through a a piece of property that is difficult to develop and something like that. I really enjoy trying to, trying to be involved as a problem solver or at least somebody who understands the issues that planning, that individuals on the, on the island are faced with. Sometimes they don't get the answers they need from wherever it is, public works or planning or something else. And I try to be an interpreter of, of what the problems, how the problems might be addressed. But I've spent a lot of time in the context or with the context in which Bainbridge Island exists. We are part of Kitsap County. And I've spent hours of time preparing for meetings that deal with grant applications and the evaluation of these applications for funding. You may not be aware. The money is, money is available, money is necessary, and there's not enough of it to address all of the problems housing related and related to the issues of destitution and mental illness, homelessness and the risk of homelessness. Kitsap County is addressing those problems in the, in a powerful and really, I've, I've, I've met the people involved in this work as well as people who are, who are evaluating what can be done or what should be done. The money that's involved in three different funds being allocated to housing projects and services for the renovation or the improvement of, of existing housing, all of this. Three funds, one of which is five million, four hundred thousand dollars. A fraction of the tax collection in Kitsap County, in the sales tax collection in Kitsap County. Another fund is eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Another fund, five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And there won't be enough to fund all of the applications for this necessary work. Some of which addresses our needs on Bainbridge Island. A number of the projects that we discussed in the, the first part of today, a long and very, very engaged meeting with city, with Kitsap County staff and volunteers like myself, looking at, looking at applications and trying to evaluate, not, not making a decision, but trying to understand what's going on here and how should we evaluate this? And how, how could we best allocate the, the available funds? As I say, some of it relates directly to needs here on, on Bainbridge Island and projects that are going forward as creative responses to our needs. Another thing, a few days earlier, on the, on Thursday morning last week, I attended the, the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board. This is the board that, that certifies comprehensive plans. And City of Bainbridge Island is at the top of a list that includes the City of Seattle. Cities that have not yet completed their comprehensive plans for evaluation. I was able to meet and talk with the staff person who will be responsible, the primarily responsible for the certification process on our own project. And I gave him some background and told him where we were. He was very open to saying, contact me when, when you have things to report and questions that you may have. There's going to be positive give and take in the process as we get a little bit closer to the end of our, our work on the sub-area plan and the beginnings of work on the land use and housing elements of the comprehensive plan. That's important work and it's in the context larger than Bainbridge Island, but it's very specific to what is best for Bainbridge Island to the best of our ability to figure, figure things out. We're trying to get things done. Not to everybody's satisfaction, but as, as well as they can be done.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Well said. Okay, I'll go quickly. I do have a quick thing, a council announcement before, for my equestrian folks. Kitsap County has come out with some new regulations and a red line document for equestrian center standards and regulations. I'm trying to get this out to as many of the folks I know who have barns and facilities. So I've been sending it around. One that I sent it to here on Bainbridge says, if this goes through, she will have to close her farm. She's been here on the island for generations and generations. Her family started the saddle club. They do holiday rides. I mean, this is something that we don't want to see happen. So if you are a barn or a farm, please reach out to me or reach out. There's a public hearing on September eleventh for Kitsap County, so time is of the essence. Okay. Thoughts on this evening? It's always a wonderful thing to see such a full room. And so that was my initial feeling. I came into this process sort of late in the game. It was a decision that was already made by council to go forward and do the police station as affordable housing as our second area of emphasis on our lists there. I don't think Blair came up with this idea that he was going to put affordable housing there on that corner by himself or whoever, I think it was even before Blair, right? Or so all of this, so sometimes there's some fact mixing and amnesia that happens. But all of the, there were all of many options on the table, even hotels, right? And so this is where we as a council landed as wanting to deliver the community and affordable housing project. For me, I just received my certificate of municipal leadership yesterday, which is your CML that you get through. Thank you, right? That you get through Washington State. And for me, it's been an exercise in really focusing on collaboration, public engagement and all of those things that are really important. And one of the things that has helped guide me with all of this, I make a list and my list is pretty simple. One column, who does this help? The other column, who does this hurt? And so I have a pretty long list going after this evening's meeting. I have lots of stuff to think about. My support for this project, I want to call out and say is steadfast. I steadfastly support the need for affordable housing on this island. I support the location as a good location. I actually work across the street at Harbor Square. I smell those fumes all day. I deal with the traffic, the folks in their one point four to five million dollar apartments and, you know, and below there at Harbor Square, deal with the air, it's fine, the traffic. There are children there. I, for, for one, moved here from New York City and we could figure out ways to play on a dime. And, but that's not the issue here or there either. So this is going to take lots more of community conversation. And that's exciting because we're going to get to be part of this collaborative process to see what it ends up looking like. I think the massing study that we're all referring to right now, that is, everyone thinks is a box on the corner. That is so you can see what, like, the shape and the space looks like. It's not what the building's going to look like. All of the comments on wanting a welcoming center or a welcoming gateway, all of that. I, for one, take that, that is what we all want as well. And so, are we allowed, yeah, like downtown or is involved down and the chamber in the first floor. My brain, now that it's so late, I'm trying to go fast, commercial space to add things in their community center. That, like, all of the things that we're talking about are all on the table as well as reaching out to the tribes and asking what they would like to see there. There's been so much discussion of land swapping and this and that. And I keep thinking, this is really not all of ours to be just so, like, oh, we'll take this swap, we'll swap it for that, you know? I keep thinking land back before swap, but that's another discussion. So who does this help and who does this hurt? I'm going to be really, really thinking about that. I'm really grateful for the community for coming out and speaking with their heart. All of this is out of love. There's not one person who's here on a Tuesday night because they had nothing better to do. It was a full room of folks who came to this room with care and consideration and spent time being eloquent. And so they deserve that back. And so, so thank you for sticking it out, those of you who are still here. And for those of you who came, nothing but gratitude to those voices we did not get to hear from, but have been really reaching out via email. Thank you too, because I think we saw, sort of saw one, not side. I hate saying that, it's not sides, it's members of our community who all want the best for it. So we heard one representing, representation of that this evening. So all really important.
Mayor, one final minute of mine?
I just have one last thing and then, yeah. So this is just one last little thing. I've been cleaning out my storage unit and I found this magazine from two thousand and five.
Oh, yeah.
And it was America's Best Places to Live. And Bainbridge Island was in it and I, yep, in two thousand and five. And it was one of the best places to live in America. Because, and the data was just fascinating. So it was, oh, yeah, best places to live. Number two, best places to live. Population twenty-one thousand, six hundred. Typical single family home, five hundred thousand dollars. Estimated property taxes, four thousand dollars. Pros, gorgeous area, outdoor activities. Cons, life revolves around the ferry. So in that, those years, what is it, two thousand and five? I don't know, I'm not a mathematician. Twenty years, our population has
Tomorrow.
Yep, our population has gone up quite a bit and average home prices north of a million dollars. So that is what we are working on here.
Thank you. Did you say twenty-one thousand?
Twenty-one thousand, six hundred.
Okay, so about four thousand and twenty years.
Yes. No. Exactly.
Right? Okay. So, so I'm just we're, we're in a public meeting. So just to put a note on this and save the corner, we've all thought about that corner. And we've wanted it. And so I just have a little clip from one of the meetings to play.
My mind, one, whatever might happen there, the corner, the corner, you know, the northeast, northwest corner really has to be. the northeast, northwest corner really has to be, in my opinion, a more public space, kind of maybe not as big as the waypoint, but something that looks like that, so it's very inviting for people and hopefully it pulls them to the right. We have businesses also going down East Winslow Way, so something that would draw your eye to the right. Those businesses deserve attention too. So plus it just makes a gate, nice gate. We have a Beema on one side and Bainbridge Island Museum of Art and waypoints. So I think that would be, it's a missed opportunity if we don't really make that place look really great. That's my, my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks Clarence. And we, actually I forgot about something too. I spoke, uh, today had a chance to speak to our lobbyists in Olympia and, um, some other things that are probably, we need more time for all of this, but we've been hearing a lot about 1220 and all the cities that are, and all of the work that they have done to ensure that we are exempt from a lot of things because of our sole source aquifer. And we are getting, as John mentioned, we were that list of, there are now 10 of us, Bainbridge Island, Black Diamond, Bonnie Lake, Carnation, Des Moines, Dupont, Pacific, Ruston and Seattle, where we're getting that nice little dart on our forehead, um, that, you know, we're probably going to have an appeal or some issues, that's okay. But, um, our, we have been talking about this project as 90 units and going to the state and saying, we're doing this project of 90 units, so, and we're a sole source aquifer, let's not, we don't have to qualify for this, this and that. And at some point, if we keep waffling on these things and we keep punting it down the road and we keep, oh, let's now, we want to do it at Suzuki, they're on to us and it's not going to, going down forever. So they're on to us, folks. So we need to do the best that we can to, um, provide affordable housing, not just before mandates, but sometime there's social and doing the right thing as well. So that's.
I just had to follow up with that.
Okay.
When I first got here, I couldn't go anywhere as a councilperson. They were on to us a long time ago. They always talked about how Bainbridge is not doing their part. They're just not doing their part because, you know, and we are a part of Kitsap County. We are a part of the state. We, we have to do our part.
So with that, City Manager's report.
Yeah, Mayor, considering the time, I've just, um, we're now getting into the, uh, past the fourth hour of the meeting and I have, we have some staff people that need to get home. I just wanted to mention that we will be posting, as already mentioned, on the project website, additional information, I think that it's needed, uh, to provide some factual information. For example, specifically, uh, we have the lease, proposed lease agreement that shows the long-term, uh, agreement and the protection for the cities, uh, in terms of cost and operations that are currently within the lease. And then also, uh, for, it requires a careful reading, there has to be some understanding of the tax credits that go into this and, uh, how long those investors expect to return off of that, which can lead to some confusion about some time with that. And with that, if, uh, through the chair, if you would like, we can go into our first regular business item. The first item we have before you on your Edgar business is to consider, uh, what you would like to do with regard to establishment of Mobility Advisory Committee. What staff suggesting that if you're interested in doing that, you do that through the reactivation and modification though, of the multi-motor transportation committee. The purpose, uh, that the council wanted to place this item on the agenda so you could study this proposition and, uh, it would be to support the invitation of the islandwide mobility plan and provide evaluations of related policy decisions, which is what you said you would like to do if there is such a committee. If the council is interested, uh, staff is recommending that you modify the Municipal Code Section 2.32, which currently exists. There is a multi-modal transportation advisory committee that is not active. It is a seven-member committee. What's interesting about this committee is in the committee membership is a Bainbridge Island Metropolitan Park and Recreation District liaison and the Bainbridge Island School District, non-voting members. We think that going forward, we'll probably make some modifications with regard to those non-voting members. The general purpose as outlined by Councilmember Schneider, uh, suggested or asked the council to consider and debate this item was to assist the city in review and delivery of proposed non-motorized projects and assist the city in soliciting public comments on proposed facility designs and routes and provide public works and planning departments with the input received. At this time, we do have staff available that could staff the committee in terms of sustainable transportation coordinator, who has been waiting patiently to show that is available for this. And I will say, uh, I apologize, Wednesday is our in-office day and so everyone is required to be back in the office on Wednesday. So actually I'm sensitive to the timing. The, so we have staff available to staff this committee. It would not be through the engineering department. We think it's more appropriate to be through the standard transportation coordinator, which is under the climate change, uh, coordinator. And so you'll see in some of the proposed activities such as the e-bike voucher program, which is a program of the standal, uh, or the climate change advisory committee, uh, that would be closely integrated along with other items, uh, that would, uh, for the broader, uh, sustainable transportation. In the background, we do want to make sure the council's fully informed, there are costs associated with having a committee. Those costs can come from insurance cost, additional IT costs. We have, uh, currently eight standing committees, but maybe some modifications of those in the future. If the council, again, uh, I'll summarize, is interested in going forward, the recommendation is that you would direct me to bring back an ordinance to amend, uh, the Municipal Code 2.32 to establish Mobility Advisory Committee. So there would be a different name, it would not be named the Multi-Motor Transportation Committee, but it would be the Mobility Advisory Committee. And, uh, I know that Councilmember Schneider has, is deeply interested in this item.
City Manager, Councilmember Fentra Johnson. Councilmember Dietz.
Yeah, I, I was going to go ahead and make the motion. I move to direct the city manager to bring back an ordinance to amend Bainbridge Island Municipal Code 2.32 to establish a Mobility Advisory Committee via modifications to the Multi-Motor Transportation Committee.
I second.
Okay, motion made by.
I'd like to, oh, we'll discuss after.
Uh, motion made by Councilmember Dietz, seconded by Councilmember Fentra Johnson. We'll have discussion right after. All those in favor? Oh, we can discuss. Yeah.
Before we vote, okay. I just wanted to say that I, I supported, I, when I was on the transportation, um, what was it? Task Force. Um, I thought that this would be something that would, would have come out of that a long time ago. So, yeah, I support this.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'll keep this super short. I'm also, it's been six years since we sunsetted that, um, committee before and, um, I'm, I'm really hopeful that this comes back. Squeaky Wheels in the letter that it sent out to all of you points out that, um, in the 2022 community survey, respondents cited mobility as, um, as one of the most important issues, 83% for improving island life, and yet it was one of the poorest performing dimensions, 44%. And I believe that islanders would benefit from having a volunteer experts that can help us become leaders in transportation options. And maybe Bainbridge would be offering leadership to the next advocacy ride in Kitsap.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Unanimously. Congratulations, Councilmember Schneider. Okay. And Hannah, the amazing, that's great. Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there. Okay, next is, um, item 8B, consider appointments to Design Review Board.
Luke, may I?
Uh, yes, go ahead Deputy Mayor.
I move to confirm the recommended reappointment of Mark O'Bean, position five, to a three-year term ending in June 2028. Second?
Okay. Motion made by Deputy Mayor, seconded by, who got it?
Joe Dietz.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I was on his interview, really, really.
Yes.
Markle Ben? Really cool guy.
Yeah.
Next, confirm appointment to the Race Equity Advisory Committee.
Yeah?
Yep, Deputy Mayor.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Nora Kim, position six, to complete a three-year term ending in June 2027.
I second.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quetzal, seconded by Councilmember Fentra Johnson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, and really another great community volunteer.
Yeah.
She went to the same college or something like that, right?
Uh, I don't remember, I don't remember the.
Yeah, she was, yeah, Nora, she was really cool. DC, just, yeah.
Oh, she went to, went to George Washington University, yeah. In the Elliot School, yeah.
A steel trap.
Right. I didn't remember that.
8D, confirm appointments to the Ethics Board.
I move to confirm the recommended appointment of Turner Vale, position four, to complete a three-year term ending in June 2027.
Motion made by Councilmember Morawaki, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. I think that's it, folks. With that, we are adjourned. Oh, uh-oh. Okay. I got in trouble.
Yeah.